Yeah. That right after the day.
We need to.
It's.
The only thing that's. The only one that's like. The question. Here's what I do. What is the thought and thought of it around? So you think kind of like. Yeah. You know, we're getting it to them. Well, I'm gonna have to. Then probably. We just need to come out. We're not. We're all. We're not. But. But.
And.
Good odds. How you doing? Is it? Quick. How's my? Pretty good.
Is there a problem?
I'm good.
Oh, really?
Amazing. Yeah.
Really?
Two times. And the hills. This is quite like. Garden. Um. Um. How we got? And. The last thing. Your union is. You are. The boss. Good. It's brilliant. That's so little sex. You want to be called the Christian. I was at two miles. Is that sound like a time to sound fast? A thousand. It's just. And yes. Since you actually were that. Like two.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. It's over. I have.
Oh.
About.
Okay. Lots of your rest. Thor. And basically. I said, okay, well, yeah.
And you're like. You gotta get that. That's right. There. Come down. So the secretary. Yeah. You go be this. Only the young. You might have helped them. They're not a day. That's. Five. What you say?
By the way, if you like. And that. Bye. Wait. Wait. I'll sit. The woman in line. Let me. Thank you. And hopefully not. It's like. And that. Yeah. Yeah. We're on. Yeah. Yeah. Counsel. We're. You know. Over. And then. Play. It's. It's. That's. My.
Good evening. I'd like to call the town council regular meeting to order here for September sixteen. And with that, I would like to ask for the roll to be called.
Councillor Schinkin.
Here.
Councillor Hopper.
Here.
Councillor Gardner.
Here.
Councillor Peterson.
Here.
Councillor Nellens.
Present. I did want to ask if each of you would rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance, and if you would just bet on our troops in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, unitaritete, and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. I did want to acknowledge we have a number of students here in the audience. Whose class are you from?
Mr. Gordon.
Mr. Gordon.
Mr. Gordon. All right. Well, thank you. We're glad to have you here. We appreciate you watching your local government in work. So, thank you. All right. We have some swearing in of new police officers. This is always a good time. It's a good feeling. Add new officers.
Two guys. It's. Whatever. Yeah.
We had the practices. So we're ready. We're ready. We're gonna do it all at the same time. Okay?
Right.
All right. We're gonna raise our right hand and then I speak your name, please.
I.
I agree. Lewis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the.
That I will support the.
Constitution of the United States of America.
Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a member of the. As a member of. So.
As a member of.
The Department of Police of the Town of Munster, Indiana.
The Department of Police. And I have a. Well, today. Yeah.
According to the law.
According to the law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard, gentlemen. Officer. Nice to. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Board. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you so much. One. He had one. Second picture. They have one. That. Very. At this point.
All righty. That was always it's a nice. Nice event to swear in new officers and add them to our force. All right. That takes us up to a proclamation recognizing the Munster Garden Week. And I've asked the councillor Hopper to please read the proclamation.
Proclamation of the Munster Town Council. A proclamation recognizing Munster Gardening Week. Whereas the Munster Garden Club has served the Munster community since nineteen fifty-four by sharing knowledge in a variety of areas such as gardening, birds, trees, and conservation, as well as civic beautification projects. And whereas the Munster Garden Club holds monthly meetings at the Munster Public Library that are open to the public to educate those interested in increasing their gardening knowledge, and its Facebook page provides further information for the community. And whereas the Munster Gardening Club's Community Service Committee has initiated and maintained civic beautification projects at White Oak Park, the Kaski House, the Munster Humane Society, and the Munster Library planter box. And whereas the Munster Garden Club has donated funds for land conservation through the Shirley Heinz Land Trust, Boy Scout and Girl Scout projects, as well as college scholarships and those going into agriculture and environmental fields. And whereas it is fitting and proper during Munster Gardening Week to recognize that through the outstanding volunteer efforts of the Munster Garden Club, future generations will be able to appreciate the benefits of gardening, arboretum, ornithology, horticulture, and conservation. And whereas Munster Gardening Week is an opportunity to encourage citizens to appreciate and benefit from the art of gardening. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Town Council of the Town of Munster hereby proclaims September twenty-second through to September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, as Munster Gardening Week in the Town of Munster, and encourages all citizens to join together to give back to the community in any way that is personally painful.
All right. Thank you. I'm looking for a motion.
Mister Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to adopt the proclamation as read by councillor Harley Parker.
I second.
We have a motion. We have support. Would you call the roll, please?
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes, absolutely.
Mister Chairman, I think we have members of Munster Garden Club here tonight, and I think they would be pleased to accept this from the council. We could have some photos with them.
You can. I'll.
Everybody. Everybody. Don't. He's individual.
Really. We're so. Plants. You don't. Funny. Plants. I'm feeling. That been doing well, right? A little. Little dry out.
Okay. That's fine.
Yeah. There. There. Where they go.
Everyone's getting.
Yeah. Come on. The sweater. Come on over here.
We'll. Yeah. We're. 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 In. Yeah. 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 There. No. We're sorry. Yeah. Thank you. Good. Honor. Okay. Okay. All right.
And that's.
All right. Thank you. But thank you very much. Thank you.
Very good. Very.
Very good. All right.
Thanks. You just.
I'm not. I'm not one of the elected guy. I thought. Oh. Oh.
All right.
All right.
Always good. Yes.
Yeah. We have a lot of good things happening tonight. All right. That takes us up to a public hearing on additional appropriations ordinance nineteen sixty-two.
Councilhead first reading and the starting of their last meeting tonight. You're being asked to hold the required public hearing and then later to adopt it.
So with that, I'll open up the open to the public comment on ordinance number nineteen sixty-two for additional appropriation. If anyone would like to come forward and speak on this, this would be the opportunity. Second time, is there anyone who'd like to come forward and speak on the additional appropriations for ordinance nineteen sixty-two? Third call, is there anyone who'd like to come forward and speak on additional appropriations ordinance nineteen sixty-two? Seeing none, we'll close the open to the public on this. And that will take us on to our second public hearing. And that's the twenty twenty-four Geo Bond Additional Appropriations. And that's ordinance nineteen sixty-four.
So each year the town issues a general obligation or Geo Bond. And this year, we're doing a bond for six million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You have a requirement to do a public hearing, which is what you're about to do. That's for the additional appropriation, the permission to spend. Later, you'll be asked to adopt the actual ordinance that would authorize the issuance of the bond. So. In your packet, you have a list of the equipment and projects that we're planning to buy. And right now, it's just the public hearing portion. Let me take that.
All righty. That I'll open the open to the public comment on the twenty twenty-four Geo Bond Additional Appropriations, and that's for ordinance nineteen sixty-four and also ordinance nineteen sixty-five. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward and speak on this matter? Again, this is the open to the public comment regarding the twenty twenty-four Geo Bond Additional Appropriations for ordinance nineteen sixty-four and ordinance nineteen sixty-five. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing, and that takes us on to the public hearing for the twenty twenty-five budget.
So. Tonight, we asked to consider the ordinance on the twenty twenty-five budget. And you'll also be conducting the public hearing. The we've had a work study last week that we might use some of the department budgets. There'll be another one within a couple of weeks to go to the remaining departments. This will. When the ordinance is adopted, it will leave the budgets that were wanting the appropriations, as well as the tax rates and the tax levies that we're hoping to get next year. Now it's time for the. For the public.
Public hearing. Thank you. So with that, I'll open the public hearing for the twenty twenty-five budget, and that's ordinance nineteen sixty-six. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward, speak on the twenty twenty-five budget? Okay. I ask again, is there anyone who'd like to come forward and speak on the twenty twenty-five budget? This is ordinance number nineteen sixty-six. Seeing none, I will close the open to the public hearing on these budgets and ordinances. And with that, that takes us on to the general open to the public session. All public comment is limited to two minutes with a total of twenty minutes allowed for the public comment section. All speakers must sign the public speaker's sign-in form prior to speaking. Please keep all comments civil, constructive, and related to public policy issues. At their discretion, the council may allow the public to comment. Public comment to extend past twenty minutes, but it is not required to do so. All the rules for the public comment are posted outside the main meeting room if you care to review that. So with that, I will open the public session for general public comment. Anyone that would like to come forward at this time? Please come forward and sign your name in there. I'll ask again, is there anyone who'd like to come forward to the general open to the public session? Please come forward and sign your name on the roster there. Third call. This is for the open to the public general comment here for the Town of Munster. If anyone would like to come forward, please do so at this time. Seeing none, we close the open to the public session, and that takes us on to the consent agenda.
Excuse me, council president. There were no electronics.
No electronics. Okay. First. No electronics. I'm sorry.
That's okay. We want to make sure.
Yes.
For the record.
Yes, please. All right. So that takes us to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to support this?
Mister President, I would make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
They have a motion. We have a second. Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. So we've done that, and that takes us up to whole business. And then as ordinance nineteen sixty-two, which we have the public hearing for.
So this is for the park fund. So once council adopts the ordinance, the information will be submitted to the Department of Local Government Finance, and then they will review the documents and approve the additional appropriation.
Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the introduced ordinance nineteen sixty-two as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. And that takes us up to ordinance nineteen sixty-three.
This is amendment number four to the salary ordinance. You had first read on this at the last meeting. This creates, authorizes a second superintendent of operations, a deputy for three to do the fleet administration work. And it cleans up some language regarding the retirement health savings and PTO for multiple positions.
Okay. Do we have a motion of support?
Mister President, I would make a motion to adopt ordinance nineteen sixty-two on second reading as presented.
Nineteen sixty-three.
Three.
In nineteen sixty-three. My. My mistake.
I second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. Motion carries. Under new business, this is ordinance nineteen sixty-four, the twenty twenty-four Geo Bond Ordinance.
This you had your public hearing on this earlier this evening. Traditionally, council has suspended the rules, waived the readings, and adopted this ordinance and the next one on the first reading, and that's for asking for you to do it tonight. So you would have the first motion, which would be to suspend the rules, waive the readings. You would vote on that, assuming that's unanimous. Then you would go on to the second motion, which would be the motion to actually adopt the ordinance.
Mister President, I would make a motion to move move to suspend the rules and waive the readings to allow for the adoption of ordinance nineteen sixty-four on first reading as presented. I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further questions, comments? Then please call the roll.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
I would then move to adopt ordinance nineteen sixty-four on first reading as presented, and I'll second that.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. All right. That takes us up to ordinance nineteen sixty-five, additional appropriations for twenty twenty-four Geo Bonds.
This is to authorize the expenditure of the proceeds once we receive them. And like the last ordinance, two steps, one to one motion to suspend the rules, assuming that that's a spending motion to adopt the actual ordinance.
Mister President, I'd like to make a motion to move to suspend the rules and waive the readings to allow for the adoption of ordinance nineteen sixty-five on first reading as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any comments, questions on this motion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes.
And then upon all, I make a motion to adopt ordinance ordinance nineteen sixty-five on first reading as presented. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further questions, comments?
I was gonna make a comment. Just for the people out there, I know these acronyms sometimes are confusing. Geo stands for general obligation, just so you know.
Well, that's my name, and I was born in sixty-five.
That's a good. That's it.
You can have a chuckle.
There we go.
Is that all?
All right. Would you please call the roll?
Councillor Geo.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. Motion carries. It takes us up to ordinance nineteen sixty-six, twenty twenty-five budget and the tax limits.
You held your public hearing on this earlier this evening. This is the first reading on the ordinance. Second reading would be scheduled and adoption would be scheduled for the October seventh meeting.
Do we have a motion for this action for nineteen sixty-six?
Mister President, I'll make a motion to hear the proposed ordinance nineteen sixty-six on first reading set October seventh, two thousand twenty-four for second reading and adoption.
I second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up the change order for the CCMG twenty twenty-four dash one.
CCMG twenty-four dash one, which is community crossings matching grant, is two of the roads that are included on that are Highland Place and Meadow Lane. And it was originally planned that a certain road surfacing would happen on that. And then when they got to start doing the work, they discovered that the base of that road was concrete. And so there's a different process that they're gonna follow now, which with the concrete base, it's going to last twenty years, is what we're guessing now with this, because it has this much more stronger base. So the change order would allow for this other work, and it's actually a reduction in the cost. It could get slightly involved.
And then we're also putting in traffic calming improvements.
Not on those two roads. Not on those two.
No. Mister President, I would make a motion to approve and authorize the interim town manager to sign change order number one to the CCMG Community Crossing Matching Grant Program two thousand twenty-four dash one, reducing the contract with milestone contract north by eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty cents for a new contract total of one million, twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight and eighty cents. I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further, any questions, comments regarding this? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. That takes us up to item E, which is pump station improvements.
At the Canada Avenue Pump Station, they have a single unit system that provides all heating and cooling. The unit is about fourteen years old. It is seeing the end of its useful life, and we want to get a new one. Bud Mechanical is the group that we work with for these types of things. And we're asking for authority to have that new purchase and have it consigned.
May it support.
Yes. Mister President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase and installation of a new rooftop unit, heating and cooling system by Bud Mechanical Systems for the Calumet Avenue Pump Station at a cost not to exceed seventeen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars.
I second that.
Motion. We have a second. Any questions, comments? I believe this is the main pump station that brings in fresh water for Munster, puts it into the towers, and then it ultimately comes out to your houses. So we certainly want to keep that in good working order and make sure it doesn't freeze up in the winter. All right. Please call the roll.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. Motion passes. Item F is the purchase of intersection cameras.
So the police department has partnered with the school town in order to get a of better pricing on some intersection cameras. And they're looking for authority to to make those purchases. Seven, seven different intersections, different camps that we're going to be getting.
All right.
Mister President, I would make a motion that we accept the police department's recommendation that we utilize the two thousand twenty-two bond issued to pay for our portion of, which is the town's portion of the invoices that the school town of Munster has received, one for twenty thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and one cent, and the other one for sixty-two thousand, two hundred and two dollars and twenty-nine cents for a total expenditure of eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty cents. I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further comment, questions?
I do see one of the school board members here, and I guess I'd like to thank him and also the school, school town of Munster for really, well, we've had a long-term working relationship with the school town, and partnerships like this do go a long way. It's two taxing bodies working together to save a little bit of money and getting up upgrade of cameras. I think there's some other things coming around the corner, too. So we do appreciate the school town of Munster working with the town of Munster. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. Motion carries. All right. That takes us up to item G, which is police vehicle equipment purchases.
This goes back to the take-home vehicle policy or the new program, and they're ordering new. It just, this is just the standard equipment that they're needing. This is the latest high that they've been purchasing. And so they're looking for authority to to purchase those items that are listed.
Mister President, I'd like to, I make a motion authorize the police department to purchase the equipment listed for a total of seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty cents for their take-home vehicles, which include fire extinguishers, car radars, big easy lockout kits, and stinger spike strips and decals.
I second that.
We have a second. Thank you. Any questions, comments on this? Motion here? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councillor Schinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellens.
Yes. Item H is police vehicle purchasing.
This is to purchase a vehicle for the new community service officer. And what police staff has done is they've they've looked at various, at the inventory. at the inventory on the lot at neighboring dealerships. They have found a vehicle that they like, but they're concerned that by the time they get approval, that it might be not on the lot anymore, so what they're looking for is authority that if they can't get it the lowest one, that they can go to the next lowest bidder. Uh so the amount that you're being asked to approve assumes that they might have to go with the highest priced one, but they are going to try for the lowest priced one first, um and that price also includes um the outfitting of the vehicle, like computer radio system.
All right, do we have support for this?
I'd make a motion to authorize the police department to purchase a new code enforcement vehicle and equipment from existing bonds at a total cost not to exceed fifty-five thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-two cents.
I'll wait, I'll second.
The motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin.
Yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes. Motion carries. And then we have item I, disposal of surplus property.
The clerk treasurer's office is looking for permission to dispose of, declare surplus and dispose of a check printer that we've had for almost thirty years, it's been a, it's been a little workforce for us, and it has finally gasped its last breath. Yeah, I'm sure.
So. And again, following uh government policy here, we have to have a a reading and and approval of disposal of equipment, so may there be a support for this?
I can't pull it up on the.
We've been trying with computers today, so.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to declare a surplus and off uh and authorize disposal of the listed property and remove same in the current inventory.
I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Uh please call the roll.
No discussion on this?
Oh, do you have any question, questions?
Exactly.
No, I think, yeah, I hung around to it for a while.
Please, no, we have to hand feed each check in one at a time, and then you put it in, and you gotta lift the top, and then you gotta push it in a little more, so.
Well, then I do have a question, with this added efficiency of a new trend, do we need as many staff people as you? Who writes checks anymore? You guys are asking for it. It's an old direct deposit.
Right, but you would, you would love that, we worked on that. So, all right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Counselor Schinkin, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Counselor Hopper.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
The clerk treasurer's office thanks you.
All right, that takes us up to, are there any reports tonight? Seeing none, are there any portfolio reports? I see none. Uh announcements, all town council meeting will begin at seven PM unless otherwise noted.
Mr. President, I would just like to make another announcement if I could, please.
Sure.
I would just like to thank uh the police department, the public works department, uh the Munster Church, and also the Ridge Road Businesses, uh the car crews that we had on uh Saturday, September seventh, was very successful. And uh would have been uh, would have been as successful without the help of these departments that I mentioned and and the businesses, and also the Munster Church, uh Long Ridge Road, so thank you very much.
And Munster Chamber.
And the Munster Chamber, thank you, yeah.
Think this will be something that'll happen again next year?
Yeah, they're working on it now. That's what the the evaluation committee wants to do.
All right. Great, great, that's wonderful. Any other announcements? If not, looking for a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? All right, this this meeting is closed, and then we will go right into the redevelopment commission meeting.
Counselor, Council President, just a uh note, the next meeting isn't until October seventh, and we are few weeks between meetings.
All right.
First Monday of the month.
Okay. All right, those of that are willing to stay, this meeting takes about two minutes. So the redevelopment commission takes two minutes, all right.
I believe it.
We'll try.
I'd like to call a meeting, to order for the redevelopment commission, and please call the roll.
Commissioner Schinkin.
Here.
Commissioner Hopper.
Here.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Nellens.
Here.
And our liaison to the school town of Munster, Mr. John Castro.
I'm here.
Thank you, nice to see you, as always.
All right, that takes us up to the open to the public, this has the same comments as the regular meeting, plus the uh rules are stated outside, is there anyone who'd like to come forward in the open to the public session for the redevelopment commission? Again, is there anyone who'd like to come forward at this time to speak in the open to the public session for the redevelopment commission? Seeing no one, I'll close the open to the public, that takes us to the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented, I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schinkin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens.
Yes. There any old business? New business? Reports? Any announcements?
If there's a question about that extra credit, that was Counselor Peterson that made that mention, okay? Extra credit was Mr. Peterson's comments.
Spoke S E N.
Thanks for throwing me under the bus again, okay?
They just, if they list that down on their paperwork, then they get their extra credit. That's simple. Calling for adjournment?
We've got to move.
Need a motion?
I'll second the motion.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Thank you for all the, can't even get it closed, thank you very much. If you wanna, if you wanna come over and take a picture.